Board of Education, meeting to order, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we're starting this evening with some recognitions.
We certainly are, and we have the principals of Daniel Hand High School, TJ Saitteri, no, we don't, we have Brian Botter, the assistant principal, and we have Frank Henderson, the principal of Paulson Middle School for the Cabe Student Leadership Award. Well, I'll introduce the family in a second. But the Cabe Student Leadership Awards Program is designed to honor two high school and middle school students who exhibit exemplary leadership skills. The two students reached school, and a Cabe member of the district are eligible to receive a leadership award. The program was expanded a few years ago to include the middle school, and we have the recipients here tonight who are very, very impressive. You'll hear about them shortly. The board may find the recipients a bit familiar, because one sits around the table quite often, and another is a sibling of a family I can comment on. If you, you know those families that you know about? You think, God, how do they do all this? How do they go there, how do they do that? How are their kids so great? If you want your family to feel like a failure, just observe the Sandor family now, because they are mom and dad remarkable. I've known them over the years, and the kids are equally remarkable. We get to see Jackie every week. But we also have another wonderful couple of families here tonight. So we're going to hear about all of them, and we're going to start off with Mr. Henderson, you want to go first?
Sure.
Okay, come on up.
Do you want me to hear some?
Absolutely, please, we want to hear about our kids.
Ryan, congratulations. And then, this is the annual Sandor show.
It is.
They just keep coming back, a year older, so congratulations. But we have two great recipients from Paulson who want to thank the board for always including the middle school. It's a great award, and I know TJ and I talk about this a lot, and Brian, that we have so many great kids in our schools. These selections, A, are not easy, but it also tells you the level of students, both at the high school and at Paulson, so congratulations. I'm going to start with Reese Scott. Reese moved here two years ago, so it's not easy to move across the country and enter 7th grade as a stranger to students who have known each other for years, but Reese did that and has done it successfully. Moving to Madison from St. Louis, I remember it was about a year ago, the parents came and we talked, and it was Teacher Appreciation Week. And we were talking, she was like, wow, your PTO does a lot for your teachers. We were having a great time. So I'm glad that she brought that back to St. Louis. But he's a fabulous young man. He's involved with his skiing, golf, basketball, played for the Paulson team. Diligent, helpful, and compassionate are the words that teachers use to describe him. He's well-respected, not only by other students, but by faculty and staff. He's a student peer helper, an athlete. He's a quiet leader in our school, and he leads by example. He's a diligent student who sets standards very high. Whether something comes easy to him or presents a challenge, he presents each task with the same level of focus and determination. Teachers appreciate his attitude towards learning, the content, and the curriculum. But his contributions to the classroom go beyond that to include a positive peer relationship. He's kind to others and considers their feelings and perspectives more than most. Perhaps this ability emphasizes what makes him such an effective part of the Peer Helper Program at Paulson and in the community. As you know, Paulson Peer Helpers are trained to provide support, advice, and decision-making assistance to peers, and he's an integral part of the program. That coupled with his honesty and integrity makes him well-liked by everyone. Congratulations, Reese Scott. That is standing.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Rovir?
I'm taking a picture, man.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You have a speech.
Take a picture? Yeah. Throw it out. This is not normal, our minutes taker is not here tonight, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Good stuff, family.
Congratulations.
Oh, if you're staying here, you're welcome.
I'll stay right here.
Our next recipient, Brooke Istition. Brooke's in the back with her grandparents and her sister. The term "well-rounded" is often overused these days, but Paulson 8th grader Brooke Istition exemplifies the word perfectly. She excels in academics, sports, the arts, and the humanities, and she does so with such grace. Academically, Brooke is an exceptional student, something that is proven by more than high honors that she's maintained through middle school. She never gives less than 100%, and gladly helps others whenever she can. It's no wonder that teachers describe her as genuine, compassionate, and hardworking. Brooke is involved in the arts in and out of school. At Paulson, she's a member of the orchestra, where she plays cello, and a member of the advanced theater class. This year, she earned the lead in our spring production, The Diary of Anne Frank. She was outstanding, it really, it was a great production, and she was outstanding. Outside of school, she continues her cello studies and dances. With all this, she's a volleyball player as well, thus proving her ability to master many interests and balance the time it takes to participate in them. Perhaps the most impressive thing about Brooke, however, is what she gives back to others. She is active in the Excel Club, raising money for different causes. She has helped with the Leprechaun Five Miler. She has helped with the Surf Club Easter egg hunt. She has made meals for the Eddie Shelter in Middletown, and in short, she's made a difference. But she also believes in advocating for what she believes in, so she attended the multiple marches, such as the March for Our Lives and the National Women's March. She knows that you're never too young to make a difference. Paulson Middle School is fortunate to have Brooke Istition as a member of our school and community, where her leadership and kindness is appreciated by all. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. She's a little bit older than us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bodnar, you're up next, Daniel Hand High School.
Thank you, I have the honor tonight to pinch-hit for TJ Saitteri, who, you know, Mr. Saitteri wishes he could be here tonight. He had a family commitment with his son, but he, again, asked me to come as your senior class administrator to represent him, and it's my honor. You're both outstanding, you know, outstanding students who have accomplished a tremendous amount at Daniel Hand. And at this time, Caitlin, you're up first, I will read your bio. Caitlin is a one-of-a-kind student who has taken the most rigorous courses offered at Daniel Hand and has not only completed them, but has mastered them. She is a leader involved in many activities, both inside and outside the classroom, and brings an immeasurable addition to every single class and activity that she is a part of. From an academic standpoint, Caitlin sets high expectations for herself and is consistently successful in achieving these expectations. A perfect example of this is Caitlin self-teaching herself AP Statistics so she can excel on the nationwide AP Statistics test. As a senior, Caitlin is enrolled in a math class at Wesleyan University, where she goes two days a week and sits in on a college lecture. Throughout high school, Caitlin has been a wonderful self-advocate, focused on taking classes to prepare her for the future. In her years at Daniel Hand, Caitlin has taken every honors and AP class that fit in her schedule, and has never received a grade lower than an A in these most challenging classes. Caitlin is ready for any academic challenge and will thrive in any learning environment. She is viewed as a leader, model student, and someone who cares significantly about her education. Outside of the classroom, Caitlin is involved in a plethora of activities. She's a four-year member of the Girls' Varsity Ice Hockey Team and plays a major role in the robotics club and their success in their competitions. Robotics is something Caitlin takes great pride in, and she is the co-captain of the Apple PI Robotics Team, captain of the Daniel Hand Vex Robotics Team, co-president of the Daniel Hand Hacking Club, coach of First LEGO League Robotics, and a member of the math team, where she placed first at the Greater Middlesex County Math League. Caitlin is involved at the Seston Lab of Neuroscience at Yale, where she worked with bioinformatics and cultured kidney cells. Caitlin is a model student and extremely active outside of the classroom. Her peers, teachers, and members of the community view her as a true leader. Her high-level success in the classroom while competing on the ice and in her numerous extracurricular activities is a direct result of her drive to succeed and her commitment to the goals she has set for herself. Congratulations, Caitlin Sandberg.
My kids have to step it up.
I feel like a failure standing next to them. You got them all? You got it? Got it? All right.
Thank you for sharing Jackie with us.
I've heard of the impressive list of schools that both students have been admitted to, and I just asked Caitlin just to double-check. I thought I knew, and that she is going to be attending Yale University, so. Our next recipient, I know the board is very familiar with and knows well. Ryan, just to, you know, go off the script for a moment. Has done a tremendous job the past two years here representing the student body of Daniel Hand, and has just been a pleasure to have, you know, for four years that I've worked with him in our school, him as a student every day. And he, like Caitlin, has excelled in so many different ways and really been a model student. So I'd like to, again, add that with both of you. You're really what our school strives and hopes that we can send off out into the world to better our world. Ryan Tomaczek. A quick review of Ryan's academic transcript will clearly confirm that he is an outstanding student. He has taken many of the most challenging courses offered at Daniel Hand High School. His success in these courses has been impressive and is a direct result of a focused work ethic and commitment to his studies. Although Ryan excels academically, he has numerous strengths that extend beyond the classroom. He is actively involved in community service and participates in a variety of extracurricular activities. He is a talented performer, who also has interests in many other areas. As a performer, Ryan has excelled in lead roles in several of our theater productions. Many of his other interests focus on helping others and include a member of National Honor Society, the president of our debate team, and an elected class officer. He is a good listener and an effective communicator, who demonstrates respect for others' opinions, respect for others' opinions, even when they differ from his own. Ryan values the relationships he has developed with many members of the community. Due to the reputation Ryan has earned, he was selected and has been serving as a student representative for the Board of Education. In all these important roles, he represents our school with pride and respect. Outside the school setting, Ryan has dedicated a great deal of time to Boy Scouts and impressively earned Eagle Scout status in 2018. He's a confident young man who is focused on his success. His commitment to academics, theater, and extracurricular events is impressive. Interpersonal and leadership skills he has developed over his years in high school are commendable. He earned the respect of both the faculty and student body. Ryan is a driven young adult who has had a positive impact on the entire school community. Ryan's academic performance, leadership, and involvement as an important member of our school community are clearly strengths. With that being said, his interpersonal traits, including positive character, compassion, and perseverance, make up an overall personality that truly makes him a special young man. Congratulations, Ryan.
I'm going to miss you.
Thank you. I'm going to put you in the spot, where are you?
I'm going to go to the Northeastern.
That's where he gets his hype. Congratulations.
Congratulations. It's been a pleasure.
This has been lovely.
Absolute pleasure. Thank you. Beautiful dress.
Thank you so much.
So glad to present mine.
You'll come visit, right, Ryan?
All right.
Yeah, so we're going to transition into public participation right now, so comments from the community. That's your cue for moms and dads to take the families and not have to endure the rest of the Board of Ed meeting and excuse yourself, or quite quietly.
Thank you for coming. Okay. I'm going to, any member of the public that would like to speak?
Not resident, sorry. I've got a lot to say, Ryan.
You can have a private audience another time. Thanks, Frank. So, student representatives report.
All right, you can start.
Oh, sir, okay. So, this past, last Wednesday, there was our final band concert and art show. It was beautiful, there were tons of students who came, it was a lot of fun. Congratulations to our seniors who are graduating. Orchestra concert tomorrow night at 7:30. You all are invited to Underclassmen Awards this Friday. I'm not sure the timeline on that one.
I'm coming, 8:30, I think.
It's always really nice, I have everyone up there. This upcoming Memorial Day, we have our whole Tiger Band marching out there. They're super excited, they're practicing every day, marching on the parking lot. Wednesday, May 29th, we have Tiger Tracks at 5 o'clock. So Tiger Tracks is like a unified track program. So that's a lot of fun, they're all very encouraging, very energetic people out there. And then later that same night, there's a chorus concert at 7:30. May 30th, the very next day, there's our National Honor Society induction ceremony at 7 o'clock. And for our spring sports, we are all entering SCC and state competitions. And I don't know if anyone's knocked out yet.
I don't know either.
I don't think anyone's knocked out.
Great.
But so we're doing pretty good.
This past Friday, there was a play that was performed, the Star Play, that was about the dangers of nicotine addiction, and that had a very positive reception. And we were able to test our new sound system, and that also worked great. AP English presentations are tomorrow. I don't know if you guys are invited to that, but.
I, I'm going. Fit the calendar, can't wait.
I'll be there.
Can you explain to the board what that is outstanding? Do you know what it is?
Yeah, yeah, I'm doing it. So everyone is doing a presentation on a book of their choice and like using several literary lenses and other connections to make a really intriguing presentation. So I'm doing my book on a book, it's like, it's a book that was on the AP English reading list. It's called Fear and Loathing in Las Vegas, and I'm doing it connecting to the history of the war on drugs and how the book could impact people in the future. So, yeah.
A very cool way of complimenting AP.
Yeah, there's really, really cool presentations. Really, really interesting, I've seen them every year, so I get to be a part of it. For seniors, we have a class trip Friday to Six Flags. And then, upcoming on June 1st, we have our senior prom, and there's going to be an assembly before that about aggressive driving, which I think is pretty necessary, assembly considering a lot of teens are not great behind the wheel.
Great, thank you. You're in the home stretch.
Yep.
Next time you'll tell us all about Senior Week and all the graduation details. All right, superintendents report.
Yeah, just a standing agenda item for me, the reconfiguration update. So you all know the GAN chart we've been following. I have to put out these cheaters because the font Gail used is a fraction. It's not even a whole number, I think. But it works, we're right on schedule. I really wanted to emphasize again that in the fall, it was operations we focused on. In the winter, it was largely staffing, administration, and now it's all attention on parents and students. Right now, we have a couple little updates I wanted to provide. Just an example, and I'm not sure if the board's aware of this, but some neighboring communities have some problems when it comes to closing schools and making these moves, these systems moves. We have had just a very, very seamless transition. It's been planned out for a year and a half. Everything's happening on schedule. The moving parts are just voluminous. There are so many details out there, but the detail-oriented nature of the leadership team has really driven this. I have to share a couple little nuggets. The first thing, Ryerson. Transitioning students from Ryerson to Jeffrey, about 70 kids. That's a tricky thing, it's not like the entire island community that's moving over to Jeffrey. So Kelly Spooner is going to be leading an event tomorrow with the Jeffrey students from K through 2, who are coming over to Ryerson next year, and the goal is they will make a connection with at least two peers throughout the activities. So they arrive in the morning, they do a little opening. Fourth grade students are going to tour them through the building. They're going to sing the Ryerson theme song together collectively. In the first half of their time, they will do some math workplace games joined by grade-level peers. So Katie's from Ryerson, I'm from Jeffrey, I come and visit. I'm with a grade-level peer in a large setting, and we'll do some math games together. And in the second half, Katie will leave, and another Ryerson kid will come in, and I'll be assigned to like a little partner peer. We'll go outside for recess to play some outside games. Kelly will be with them the whole time, kind of addressing them. All creative opportunities for kids to kind of get through that transition period. I am just so proud of the way the staff and leadership team have taken this on. Frank Henderson left, I forgot to talk about it. He attended the PTO meetings at the elementary level to find out, what do you want to hear from us at our transition meetings? The transition meeting was very successful, in large part because of the care that Frank put into it. He had a great lineup, you know, I'm going to do this, I'm going to say that, but let me hear from the parents first. So some of that groundwork was done first. He incorporated that in his presentations, it's very successful. The moves are coming up, and that's where Bill is instrumental in a lot of this work. Furniture, classroom library books, instructional supplies, the actual library collections. We have two moving days in June for teachers with 50 boxes per classroom going in there. All the technology, the servers, the computers, the machines, the networks, reconfiguration. Infinite campus changes, the data circuits are getting removed where appropriate. We have kitchen equipment moving around. And the last thing that I wanted to touch on for the reconfiguration that's on the GAN chart, and it is that time, and it's 4.2, is the renaming of Brown Middle School, which has to be done by the board at some point. It is not a middle school anymore. So some homework was done on this topic, and there is a board policy about naming and renaming, but it's more about components of buildings, not an entire building. The policy really doesn't cover when a building is reconfigured and it serves a different population and is a different model. So very modestly, I would suggest that the board take action to rename Brown Intermediate School. I have no skin in the game. If you want to call it Stein Intermediate School, you can do that.
Well, you have skin in the game, if you.
Yeah, well, that's not going to happen. That's not a very pretty name for a school. But at some point between now and the school opening, we have to look at the signage up front, the letterhead, all the different places around the building that say Brown Middle School, and definitely come to consensus and have board action around the naming of the school. So if there's any questions about that, I could field those questions now, or at least get answers to them if I don't have them now.
I mean, my only question would be, would we just discuss it as a board? We'll put it on the next agenda, so if anybody has any other ideas.
We can put an action item.
Bring it to the next meeting, and we'll add an action item?
Yeah.
I don't think it has to go through Policy Committee if we review the policy. So, okay, let's do that.
Can we throw some, or can we request some ideas from students at the different levels to generate some names?
Yeah, so my only concern about changing it from Brown is.
That we're going to keep it Brown.
I would suggest that, because the policy does kind of. That's a great question, actually, you know what? I could have brought that up, and I did. The policy does speak to the process, which is incredibly comprehensive. Yeah, when you're going to name, even a library after somebody. You know, the process behind it to get there. So that was undertaken when it was called Dr. Robert H. Brown. If you were to change that, then I would suggest a little bit more prolonged discussion at the board level. If it's going to be intermediate, middle to intermediate, I would think it's probably a quick process.
That's a good question.
So I'm just going to hand out the flyer for Ryerson's future students, which I mentioned earlier. There's a couple copies for.
Is this the transition?
Yeah, that's what I referenced before, yeah.
Okay, this is next. It's May 30th.
It is May 30th, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I said tomorrow, I'm sorry. Couple other quick matters. Oh, I'm sorry. Couple other quick matters. We have, any notify that they'll be going down to parents to make sure that they pay attention to a survey that'll come their way via email, to the email we have on file. Because what that will, what that will be is a survey for our strategic plan. And that is the parent satisfaction survey for all current students. The other piece will be an alumni study, which will go out to all graduates from two years out, four years out, six years out. So that notify is coming. The last other matter I have is, we have talked about an anonymous reporting app, and pleased to announce that we have come to agreement on the parameters of an agreement with a vendor that we believe is a great tool for us in two-way communication. There'll be a communications campaign to come out for parents and students to be aware of that, and the community, and much more to come on that. So we've worked on that since January, we finally have to finish it.
Great. Board member comments? Committee reports, curriculum and student development.
Okay, the Curriculum Committee held two meetings on May 8th and 17th. They were quite in-depth, and I can't possibly, can't possibly do justice to the discussions. In summary, I'd say that we reviewed the DRA in terms of the SRBI, took a look at the PBA, and wound up with the EZCPA.
On the DIA.
Right, right. There we go.
I love that you got that.
All right, so we met, the overarching purpose of the work to hold a vertical review in K to 12, emphasis on grades 1, 3, and 4, 8, and also the high school. In the context of, how are our kids learning to read? How do we assess them? How do we know when they're progressing and how they're struggling? And this was within the context of the scientific research-based intervention, which is the tier system that we use. And I'd like to thank all the teachers who came there. I don't want to miss any, but they gave really good examples of authentic work and were very passionate about how, what they're teaching. So I would just like to touch on a few themes that I picked up, because obviously I don't know what the acronyms mean. First of all, the curriculum truly is vertical, and there's a continuity now from 8th grade to the high school that was lacking before, which serves the kids. The second is that in terms of reading, there's an emphasis on writing self-proactive strategies and authentic work at all levels of instruction. Students are given a lot of choice in terms of what they'd like to read, although there are limits, of course. The other theme that I picked up on was the multiple layers of assessment that go on, from face-to-face time to recording things in Logbook to provide data to Gail and her team, just many, many layers. Teachers emphasize the importance of the literacy coaches and the teams getting together to discuss best practices. And there's more, but I think I'll turn over to Gail or to the board if there are any questions.
I think a lot of calibration that goes on as well.
I think a lot of calibration that goes on as well, and a lot of double-checking and informing what our next steps will be, how we'll grow, and how we'll continue to refine our work is another piece that we do on an ongoing basis.
I'll come up with a more detailed write-up, but a little bit coherent.
Good job with the alphabet.
Yeah.
End of report.
Communications. Yes, so the Communications Committee meets next on Monday, June 10th, a change from our typical schedule. And in our ongoing conversations about community outreach and messaging, sharing news with a wider population, and in partnership and conversations with members of the Economic Development Commission, the idea of a professional communication staff person was brought up. So in exploring that idea, we found that more and more districts are employing such a person to coordinate communications for the district, including websites, print material, social media, press inquiries, and more, time-consuming work that right now is really managed by busy administrators. So we had discussed this possibility in committee and had been supportive of the idea, and Tom will tell us a little bit more, our recent staffing change makes this possible without any additional funding. So Tom, I'll let you provide more details on this opportunity that we believe will help our district-wide communications and be a more efficient use of our resources and our administrative team.
So before I touch on the staffing piece, some of the substantive communication is what's critical. I've seen in my, you know, in my eighth year now, the way social media and the way the media in general has just evolved in my tenure to a point that, devolved, to a point that it is very difficult to focus on maintaining a very positive, strong message, projecting an honest, transparent message without having it being inflated. So there are pitfalls to communication. On the flip side, we have tried to work with our building administrators to have a social media presence, but reality is, they're running schools. And on my laundry list of to-dos for the day, that's always going to fall to the bottom of the list when it comes to attending to teachers and students and the day-to-day job. The other part that I want to point to, that I think will be a deeper discussion this summer, what we do is change the plan retreat, is we have an objective on communicating individual and district performance, which the Curriculum Committee got a very high-level view of some incredibly comprehensive ways that we track student performance at the district level, but well beyond just at four different levels. One level is universal screen level and the basic skills. We went well beyond that. So we had a retirement recently, and whenever we have retirements, we, Heather, as a matter of rule, will analyze third placement need. So sometimes it's easy, if third grade teacher retires or has to resign mid-year, it's pretty simple, there's still 18, 20 kids, she has to teach, that's an easy one. Sometimes it's an analysis of the role and the function, and if you just so happen to be here, it's not why easier, but it was the facilities department, and we did an analysis, and we found a way to meet the needs on a part-time basis in the facilities department, not fill that job full-time, but also be able to look at a professional staff member to come in with acumen and with expertise in messaging, in, I don't want to say marketing as much, but just being able to keep your eye on that communication ball and keep it going forward on a constant basis. As I said, we're relying on right now, you know, the resources in my office, we're relying on the resources of principals who are running schools, and with all due respect, it is incredibly admirable, we're relying on volunteers in the Communications Committee to do that. So I'm excited, I really am. I think this is the right thing to do. I think it will, will help in multiple levels. We're looking to post tomorrow, but I'd love to come back with the board, you know, with an update on here are the substantive tasks that we're looking at communicating, but more importantly, to zero in on a new strategic objective around communication this summer and build that into our strategic plan as a district. So, very excited about it.
I'd just like to add one thing to thinking about the tri-board meeting tonight and the work we have ahead of us over the next one, two, five-plus years, and thinking about what happened with the referendum. I mean, that is so much information and so many moving pieces that it needs, it's critical that we communicate it well, and you speak a different language than I speak, than people in town speak, and I think having someone, it's just going to make, it would make everyone's lives easier and clearer.
And Ellie, I'm, you know, a big proponent of communicating what we do on a daily basis because, you know, we all kind of get the inflection points, and we swing and miss or hit a home run of those inflection points. In the referendum, big swing and miss, communication was part of it. But there's the day-to-day steady drumbeat of great things that are happening that I just wish I could sit and communicate it out on a daily basis. You think about, you know, some of the programs that Caitlin Sandor was involved in, those were, I saw, I saw like kind of the looks like, we do that. Yes, we do. We do a lot of these great things, all the way down to elementary, even the horseshoe crab that you did, right? I mean, that is tremendous experience that we should be able to blast out and be proud of, that makes us so different from other districts. So I'm really excited about this, on many levels.
And it's a process.
Yeah.
And the hope is that you would hire somebody over the summer, potentially?
We'd love to have the posting go out tomorrow, this week, and really dig in, have somebody onboard, you know, mid-summer, late summer, latest, I don't think a year off. So that's where we are.
Any questions? End of report. Okay, thank you. Facilities.
It's going to be a team approach here, I think, since our chair is not here. So I think we're going to, as a team, delegate out to Bill as much as possible, like all good teams do. So Bill has some good news to talk about, and also there's some items on the agenda to talk about, so.
Should we lead with the good news?
Good news first.
Yeah, we'll lead with the good.
So the contractor has been set up for the playground. We had a really successful contractor doing the site work, that, you know, bid the site work, and we're going to extend the, to complete the site work. We also, he also was working with a contractor that does the playground installation off the state mid-list, a pre-approved contract that we've awarded. So, you know, we'll have the funds July, the budget has passed, you know, we finalized that, so we will have the playground, the whole playground, in for September 1st.
So that's ahead of schedule?
Yes.
And under budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure. It depends on what budget you look at. So that's, that's a loaded question, if somebody looked at one budget versus the other. So it'll be on time and within budget.
Okay.
So, that's a very successful project. The ones that we haven't talked about much, because you approved a long time ago, were the track. I met with the contractor today, finalizing the schedule. Basically, you know, he'll be in the end of June, a month of July, we'll have the track resurfaced. That's a huge project.
And offline for about a month, summer, right?
Yes, yep. So, you know, we're not going to have any activity there, we're going to probably, we close the Paulson Gym, so we don't have construction and people, we don't want a big events there. Close it to outside big events.
So there will be, you will hear some unhappy people run down, because that is a very active gym and track, like this is a very, very, you know, worthwhile, necessarily, we planned this for a while now.
Yes, yeah.
It sounds like you're saying the whole town uses the facility, even though it's a school facility, is that right?
Oh, there's your track.
Good.
Correct.
Is it the shed?
So the, also, the board approved, the board and the town approved the budget for the storage shed, and that's on the agenda tonight?
It is.
And so hopefully, if you award the contract as I've requested, you know, once again, I selected four contractors that are local, that we do business with to solicit proposals. Three of them gave me numbers, two of them are really close, and, you know, I'm just going to, I think we should go for the low price, and we'll get that done this summer. And I think that's a huge benefit to the school. TJ, which I didn't realize, now that we have the new sound system, is going to do some kind of program in there, if we can get the stuff out of there, so he's going to actually be able to expand the use of the stage to, you know, academics, Holy Cow, teach kids stuff. So if we get the stuff out of there and into the storage building, he can do academics, which I didn't know about. I just wanted to get the stuff out of there so it'd be a safer, better place to be. And so that's another exciting thing, I think, that we can get done. I don't go, won't go into the details, but, you know, the move's ready to go, the new furniture's coming. There's another item on the agenda, I'd like to get rid of the old furniture, we don't need to keep it, and the Facilities Committee's made a recommendation to donate it to Food for the Poor, which is an organization, we've donated before, I think it's legit. There has been some question about other local organizations. I've never been successful in trying to find organizations that want to take that quantity of furniture. And so then, if we can't get rid of it, you know, the end result is we will throw some of it away that we can't get into the container to get it donated. So that's, those are the, sort of the new, you know, the summary, I think.
Both of those items, as I described, are the kind of move unanimously out of Facilities to board for consideration tonight. End of report? Yeah, okay, end of report.
That's it done. Good team. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee met this evening. We had a short meeting in view of the fact that we had the tri-board presentation at 6 o'clock tonight. Stacy gave us a further update on the account balance. Again, we continue in deficit in the special education area and the legal areas, but there is sufficient monies available in other areas so that we expect to be able to cover those deficiencies with line item transfers from other areas where we have some surplus. End of report.
Thank you. Personnel Committee.
No activity since the last board meeting. We'll meet again on June 6th with Mason.
Great, thank you. Policy.
Policy Committee would have normally met tonight, both moved to accommodate tri-board. Not coincidentally, the Policy Committee was just voted informally most flexible committee in the not an accident. There's a trophy in every...
By the Finance Committee.
See, we have our meeting on the 30th at 6:30, and you'll see on the agenda, five items that are second readings, one of which is a removal, four of which are modifications or new. So you've seen those before, you've heard about them. If you have any feedback, come see us on the 30th, or let me know. End of report.
Thank you. I'm giving these trophies.
Oh, I'll be handling them. Yeah, the trophies.
Learn Liaison.
Yes, at the, at the Learn meeting, it was interesting, there was, there was a focus on measurement of academic performance. One of the things they are attempting to do is build a longitudinal, longitudinal database? Did I get it out? So they can monitor student progress through time. That is a major effort, and one of the reasons for that is because the maritime, students at the Maritime Academy scored very high on the standardized tests, and they had minimal gap, well within the one standard deviation measure. Other programs did not score as well, and some of their programs apparently have experienced excessive absenteeism. And so one of the, one of the issues that they're facing is trying to understand why students who were accepted based on lottery system apparently don't show up at school as, as expected. They don't know if it's a transportation issue, student misses a bus, and parents don't have the wherewithal to transport them, or if there are some other factors that are involved. One of their schools, Riverside Academy, is currently working with a number of businesses in the area, and they have actually introduced now an advanced manufacturing program as part of their curriculum in order to develop students who would be desired by the manufacturing businesses that, the few that continue to remain in the state of Connecticut. There apparently are some, and they're, they're in need of skilled, skilled hands. Oh, the last item that, that I thought was, that I thought was interesting is, they have now decided, determined that they want to have what they refer to as a living curriculum writing process, so that rather than have a curriculum review based on calendar time, they want to monitor the curriculum as we go forward, as, you know, on a, on a, daily is an extreme, but on a much shorter frequency, and if they recognize deficiencies, address that.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I thought that would, I thought, I thought a number of those items would raise some flags.
Yes.
And that's end of report.
Thank you. But you're on again, tri-board.
Tri-board.
Yes, he proposed, he's very busy.
Yeah, exactly. Somebody have any questions? You just heard, you just heard, with the exception of you, you just, you just heard the presentation. So the tri-board committee, tri-board working group presented to the membership of all three boards, the tri-board, our final report tonight recommended two options for further consideration, passing that buck off to the Facilities Committee for their continued work with Bill McMahon and with Colliers to develop the, the option or options that will advance to the CIP process. End of report.
Great, thank you. And thank you so much again, Kirk, for all of your work and efforts on the tri-board for the past seven months. As the youngest member on the board, meeting, having served the least amount of time, you really took on a big night.
But it was pretty clear it wasn't based on age.
At heart, but thank you, really.
It was a pleasure, it was very, it was a very good group, and everybody made what I thought were significant contributions.
Yeah, it's got a lot done.
It was a good process.
It's a good model to follow, and I hope that we will continue to communicate well and, and work well with the other boards to push the ball forward.
Play well with the other children.
Be nice. Playground.
Unless you're going to do it. Can I make a motion from the floor to recognize and appreciate the work of the tri-board committee, in particular, our two fine members here who participated in that process, Galen and Kirk?
So moved.
We should need a second.
Second.
I just want to formally recognize you all for doing that work a little while.
Thank you. Much, much appreciated. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearty. Hearty aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Motion carries. Thank you, thank you both.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Audience response?
Yeah.
All right, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. Thank you. Discussion.
I'd like to call out the donation for $3,000 from the Brown School PTO to Brown Middle School and thank them for their support.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the May 7th, 2019 Board of Education meeting.
So.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Motion carries, thank you. I need a motion to waive the standard RFP process and authorize the Director of Facilities to award the Danielhand High School Storage Shed project based on a three-bid market contest. The Facilities Committee further recommends that the board vote to authorize the Director of Facilities to forward to Schumach Construction Company on May 15th, 2019 memorandum awarding the project to the, to that company as authority to initiate that project. Little quickie, thank you, Val. And it doesn't need a second, because it's a committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. So any old business? And the future agenda items, meeting and dates of importance are attached. I need a motion to adjourn.
So move, sir.
Next, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
We actually didn't need a second, but thank you for that, no, my, all in favor, or, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. So any old business? Any future agenda items? Meeting and dates of importance are attached. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Nice chat. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.